Hi, Robin. Can you hear me okay? Yes, I can.
Okay.
Yay, my microphone's working this time. This is great.
Yeah. It always takes so long to get to log in, so I thought I'd better start really early.
Yeah, you were the first one here and I'm about to let Dave in now.
Okay.
Hi, Dave. Dave, can you hear me? Oh, you're on mute, Dave.
It might take a second.
Thank you, Jillian. Good evening.
Good evening. How are you?
I am well. I am well.
Good.
So AI is gonna do our minutes?
I, I think so. I hope so.
That's what the notice said when I logged on.
Okay, perfect. Yeah, and that's an agenda item, item tonight also.
Yeah, I see that. Okay.
Yes.
Uh, yeah, I got that resignation letter. It's like, who's that? What's, what's that? Hi, Robin?
Amanda's been keeping the OSAC minutes for, at least since I've been here.
Okay.
Hi, Judith. Welcome.
You'll probably have to mute.
Everybody, I'm sorry I was muted.
Yep, I think we all were when we logged in.
Robin, I have to say that your background always throws me. I think you're the commander of the Starship Enterprise or something. Every time I scan over.
Well, it's better than my reel.
So yeah, I give you a whole lot of respect when I look over at you there. It's like, oh, bye.
Well, now you know what I wanted to be when I grew up.
Okay.
Judith, you still have sun over there. Yeah, which is weird because this is the east side of my house.
Oh.
So, yeah, odd.
Yeah, I look at mine. I'm like, oh no, we lost the sun a while ago.
Yeah, this is actually my backyard. So west is my front yard. So, yeah, but it's, it is weird. We get a lot of sun back here.
Yeah.
But Judith, aren't you over by Columbia?
I'm on Becker's Lane.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Hi, Cheryl.
Hi, I'm, I'm going to turn on my video in just a minute, but I've been on Zoom a lot and I recently had Quantum Fiber installed and I think it's because my laptop is rather old and it's not, it keeps cutting out. And I was told that if the computer is, or the visual is off, that it sometimes works better. So I'll, I'll turn on for a little bit, but I probably, especially, you know, you'll have to tell me if I freeze because I can't tell when I'm freezing. But I don't want to lose you auditorily.
Alright, thank you.
I can kind of come back on, on and off if I need to vote or something like that.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, I've just been through a computer replacement and it is very painful, disruptive, frustrating. Avoid it at all costs, but.
Well, it's not, it's not what I wanted to be buying right now. This laptop works great under my old internet.
Oh, and then you froze.
Yeah, you're frozen. So we'll, yeah, we'll accommodate you. We'll make it work.
But I'm here and I'll be here.
Okay. We have three members right now. We need to wait for one or two more to have a quorum.
TJ's joining now.
I need to figure out a way without having to send seven separate emails to, to poll the members to see who's able to attend in advance of each meeting.
Judy won't be on tonight. Can you hear me?
Oh, Judy Karnak. Okay, I was just saying Judith is Judith. I'm looking at Judith. Okay.
Judy Karnak will not be on tonight.
Okay, yeah, it would be nice to have some way to communicate that in advance so that we don't sit around waiting. I don't know about Andrea or Paul.
The time I missed, I had COVID and by the, you know, I'm like, okay, I'll do that. And, and of course, there were a lot of things going on that day as well. And then I went downhill quick and totally forgot.
Yeah. Well, we do have four. TJ, you're here. If you could unmute and just acknowledge you're here and say hello.
Yeah, I'm here. I'm just a little bit of technical difficulties, but I'm, I'm around.
Well, thank you. Thanks for joining in. We have a quorum of four with, with Robin Kovats, Cheryl Klein, Dave Conley, and TJ Maltese. We also have some citizens observing Nate and Vanessa. Can they identify themselves? So we, we know who we have or?
Hi, hi, Dave. I appreciate it. Yeah, just observing. Thank you.
Good, good. Well, welcome.
Thanks so much.
Let's see. Well, let's turn, let's call the meeting to order then. As I say, we have four members, so we have a quorum. We do have three openings for alternate members. We've previously received applications from Cassandra Bresnahan and Marion Saruzzi as alternate members. They participated in the meeting in August. And this is actually our September meeting, but we rescheduled it to accommodate Cheryl's and my travel plans. So technically this, I think this is being called a, I've seen it called a special meeting in one place, but our agenda says it's a regular meeting. So we went from September 29th to October 1. But anyway, we have two alternates. They did participate. As I've said, you've seen their resumes. Judith, correct me here, but I think the next step, if we are so inclined, is to take a motion to recommend their appointment by the city council for either or both of Cassandra or Marion. Does that sound right, Judith?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, alright. Can I, can I get a motion to approve these two applications or one application, whatever your choice is?
I'll make a motion to approve both.
Alright, motion, motion by Robin, a second?
I'll second.
Okay, TJ, second sat. So we have the, any more discussion on that? I'll make the comment that both seem really quite genuinely interested in the activities and definitely seemed to have the interest, excuse me, the energy to apply. So they would be, they would be nice additions.
Are they here tonight?
I'm sorry?
Are they here tonight?
No, they're not participating. I don't see them. Jillian, any, they're not, they don't show up? They're not here?
No, they're, they're not present this evening right now.
Okay, they, they did participate in August. Any more discussion on that? Not hearing any. Then let's vote on the motion to approve Cassandra Bresnahan and Marion Saruzzi to recommend them to city council as alternate members. All in favor? Alright, we have four, four out of four. So that's approved by all members participating. Thank you. So I understand that may be a letter, but I'll coordinate with the city clerk on that and make sure that gets in front of council. Next is the agenda review. If, are there any comments by the members to adjust the agenda or anything, look out of line? Okay, not hearing any. And then is there any public comment? Nate or Vanessa, did you have anything to say or?
I'm no, no comment this evening. Thank you though.
Okay, thank you. Alright, well then we move into reports. Let me just give a quick summary. Today's agenda is a real bit, quite a bit different from that August meeting where we had numerous motions and approved lots of dollars. This one is really more following up on everything that we put in motion back in August. So let's turn it over to Jillian and let her have the floor. Can you, Jillian, Jillian, can you give the name of that contractor again a bit more slowly? I just couldn't catch it.
Yes, it's Front Range Arborists.
Thank you. Got it.
Yep. And then for our master plan implementation, I met with Kim Lee Horn on the 25th of September. Their next step is to connect with CDOT and our city engineer to get the ball rolling on permits for the crosswalk in the trail corridor. So they'll be working to help us get surveying started. We need to do a survey in order to get the crosswalk in the bridge area kind of mapped out. And they're also going to conduct modeling of the creek to make sure that the bridge doesn't impact the flow of the creek, which would be an issue. So Jim with Kim Lee Horn, Kim Lee Horn is working on that.
Very good.
And then for Bill Bowers Open Space, so our public outreach survey project, I'm also met with Kim Lee Horn on September 25th to discuss the survey. I basically talked through the recommendations from city council and our draft survey with Jim. And he did submit a draft survey for review. I didn't have time to get it on the OSAC agenda, but we will be able to preview it at our meeting later this month, on the October 27th meeting. The goal is to launch the survey after Thanksgiving, the first two weeks of December. And like I mentioned, the draft will be available after, or at the next OSAC meeting.
That'd be awesome, Dave. And if, if he's serious about that, I'll let Timberline know and maybe they can connect with him also if they need to park there or stage anything there temporarily. That could be really helpful.
And then what's my third one? Oh, Iron Mountain Trail Report. So Iron Mountain Trail, Timberline Trail Craft is going to start work on Monday, October 13th, and the work should take about two weeks. So that's exciting. We have a, a date with them. And I'm going to work with our public information officer to get the trail closure map publicized prior to the work beginning. I'm also going to collaborate with, or communicate with Crystal Park to make sure they know that our contractors need access up the road.
Well, or even just to know his name, to say hello. That, you know, that sort of, that sort of courtesy goes a long way. Okay, I'll do, I'll follow up with you on that.
Okay, sounds good.
Well, thank you. Making progress on, on those items. And all of those were budget items that were approved at the last meeting, or expenditure items that were approved, or the fire mitigation being a big budget item goes to council. Any questions for Jillian on, on status of any of those? Okay, under new business, we have this Volunteers for Outdoor Colorado grant opportunity. And Jillian, you're gonna, I did not get a chance to review that again before this meeting, so I'm, I'm a little vague again. Can you help me out on that? It's due October 15th, is that right?
Yeah, so essentially the VOC grant or Volunteers for Colorado, or Volunteers of Colorado grant, we could apply for to get volunteer assistance with trail maintenance throughout the trail system. And that's something we could put into play in 2026. So I guess I would just like to hear, I think it's a great opportunity. I think the more grants we can get, the better, especially right now. And helping to identify trail maintenance needs is always great from OSAC. But to complete the grant, we do need kind of a specific project we'd like them to work on. So I know we have a volunteer day coming up this Sunday that's going to address part of the Spring Street Trailhead to the Inman Trail. And then we have the Big Iron Mountain Trail project. But if OSAC has any other suggestions, those would be great to hear. And I know Paul does, but he's not in yet, unless his username is Parli, P-A-R-L-I, who just joined the meeting. But any other suggestions would be great.
It might be him. I don't remember. I don't remember.
Oh, it is because Paul Arling.
Okay.
House. Okay, so he's coming in now.
Okay. Hey, Paul.
Hello.
Hello, we are in, we are in the new business item, talking about this Volunteers for Outdoor Colorado Grant.
Okay.
Application, but we need to identify, at least tentatively, a project. The other project potentially on the table would be to do some of the initial work on Black Canyon Open Space. But what I recall from the VOC materials is that they're willing, I'm mixing it up with the Youth Corps, so I probably shouldn't speak. I'll just confuse things. Jillian, is the VOC just one day or is it a weekend? That's what I can't remember. Youth Corps was two weeks of work, basically.
Youth Corps is two weeks. I think VOC is only one or two days. So it's not, this wouldn't be a lengthy project. It would be something that we have a lot of folks concentrated on for one or two days.
So it, it could be building on the open space. I'm sure we could find some maintenance to do on trails. You know, we could set that aside as a backup. But ideally, I think the best would be building new trails.
You know, there, there are a number of sections of the Black Canyon Trail design that utilize the existing trails. So it just requires some connections between them and some, some corrective work.
Yeah, that would probably be ideal.
And then the backup would be maintenance on Iron Mountain or Inman as we identify it. I think we can run with that. Is that, TJ, any thoughts on that? Because you've got real experience on.
Yeah, so Paul and I were participating in the cleanup in Black Canyon a couple of weeks ago as well. And there's still a lot more work to do up there for cleanup, you know, even though we did pull out two dump truck loads of debris and, and things that were up there, scooters and you name it. One of the big problems with, with that was just the process of getting things from where the debris piles were down to the collection point was pretty tough. So both being able to have volunteers helping with the porting of the, the debris down to where it can be collected, as well as people working on trails to make the, the path a lot easier because it was a pretty difficult trek to get it down, would both be helpful.
I wonder if, if the VOC, if the volunteers, I mean, I think all of us have received their, our emails. Is it very attractive to say, come clean up trash at our new open space, as opposed to come build some trail on our new open space? I guess you do both.
Yeah, I'd kind of hate to have them do the trash pickup. That's pretty brutal. And I think as we get trails in there, it'll become easier to get stuff out. So.
Okay, that's TJ's point then. Okay. I had committed to work with Jillian to, to prepare that grant application. It's, I say it's a grant application. Jillian, is that the right way to say it? You're asking VOC to identify your project as a, as a trail day for, for their team. Is the way I.
Yeah, so it's, I don't know if grant is the right word, but we would be applying for the VOC services.
There you go. That's the right way to say it. Okay.
I don't, I don't know if grant is the right word, but we would be getting folks to work on, in our trail system for no cost.
And it would just be sometime during the summer, most likely. But is any, any objection to, to Jillian and I trying to get that done by October 15? Objection? Okay. Well, then let's, let's pursue that. And then just to summarize that with, with Paul and TJ's suggestion. Trail construction on Black Canyon Open Space. And then with maintenance on any of the other trails as a backup would be the focus. Okay?
And just a quick aside, I know Manitou Springs PD is planning on connecting with Keep Colorado Springs Beautiful for an additional cleanup at Black Canyon. So we do have PD also continuing to schedule cleanups at that location. I know there's still a lot up there. So, but we'll keep picking away at it.
Yeah, that's it. It's the right phrase. Look, because I, I don't want to forget, otherwise I'll have to owe my wife big time. My son has been one of the crew leaders for the Creek Week Cleanup, which is this past weekend and next weekend on, on Fountain Creek. And so my family does the section from, we meet at the Ball Field on Becker's Lane at 9:00 AM on Sunday, October 5th. And we do the section from the Adams Crossing Bridge upstream to the pool. And we usually have about seven or eight of us. And we've corralled one new person, but we've lost two people who have passed away in the past year, who won't be doing it. So if any of you want to get in the creek or walk the sidelines of the creek on Sunday to pick up trash, come join us at 9:00 AM at the Ball Field on Sunday morning. Okay, anything else on the VOC application? Alright, moving on to OSAC meeting minutes. Jillian really needs to explain because I had no idea how our minutes got done, but by Amanda Robinson. Jillian, can you explain what's going on there?
Yeah, so ever since I've known OSAC for the past two years and five months, you guys have allotted administrat- administrat-
We have this volunteers for outdoor Colorado grant uh, opportunity and um. Jillian, you're gonna, I, I did not get a chance to review that again before this meeting, so I'm a, I'm a little vague again, can you help me out on that? It's due October fifteen, is that right?
Yeah, so essentially the VOC grant or volunteers for Colorado or volunteers of Colorado grant. We could apply for to get volunteer assistance with trail maintenance throughout the trail system and that's something we could put into. Play in twenty twenty-six, so I guess I would just like to hear, um, I think it's a great opportunity. I think the more grants we can get, the better, especially right now and um. Helping to identify trail maintenance needs is always great from OSAC. But to complete the grant, we do need kind of a specific project we'd like them to work on. So I know we have a volunteer day coming up this Sunday that's going to address. Part of the Spring Street Trailhead to the Inman Trail, and then we have the Big Iron Mountain Trail Project. But if OSAC has any other suggestions, those would be great to hear, and I know Paul does, but he's not. Uh, in yet, unless his username is Parli, P A R L I. Um, who just joined the meeting, but any other suggestions would be great.
It might be him, I don't remember, I don't remember.
Oh, it is, cuz Paul Arling.
Okay.
House, okay, so he's coming in now.
Okay. Hey, Paul.
Hello.
Hello, we are in, we are in the new business item, talking about this volunteers for outdoor Colorado grant.
Okay.
Application, uh, but we need to identify, at least tentatively, a project. The other project um, potentially on the table would be to do some of the initial work on Black Canyon Open Space. Um. But what I recall from the VOC materials, um, is that they're willing. And I'm mixing it up with the Youth Corps, so I, I probably shouldn't speak, I'll just confuse things. Um, Jillian, is the VOC just one day or is it a weekend? That's what I can't remember, um. Youth Corps was two weeks of work, uh, basically.
Corps is two weeks. Uh, I think VOC is only one or two days, so it's not, this wouldn't be a lengthy project. It would be something that we have a lot of folks concentrated on for one or two days.
So it, it could be building on the open space, um, I'm sure we could find some. Maintenance to do on trails. You, we could set that aside as a backup. Um, but ideally, I think the best would be building new trails.
You know, there, there are a number of sections of the Black Canyon Trail. Design that utilize the existing trails, so it just requires some connections between them and some um, some corrective work.
Yeah, that would probably be ideal.
And then the backup would be maintenance on our mountain or Inman as we identify it. I think we can run with that, is that TJ, any thoughts on that? Cuz you've got real experience on.
Yeah, so Paul and I were um, participating in the cleanup in Black Canyon a couple of weeks ago as well. And um, there's still a lot more work to do up there for cleanup, um, you know. Um, even though we did pull out two dump truck loads of uh, debris and, and things that were up there, scooters and you name it. Um, one of the big problems with uh, with that was just. The process of getting things from where the debris piles were down to the collection point was pretty tough, so. Um, both being able to have volunteers helping with the porting of the uh, the debris down. To where it can be collected, as well as people working on trails to make the, the path a lot easier, cuz it was a pretty difficult trek to get it down. Um, would both be helpful.
I wonder if, if the VOC, if the volunteers, I mean, I think all of us have received their, our emails. Is it very attractive to say, come clean up trash at our new open space? As opposed to come build some trail on our new open space, uh, I guess you do both.
Yeah, I'd kinda hate to have them do the trash pickup, that's pretty brutal and. I think as we get trails in there, it'll become easier to get stuff out, so.
Okay, okay, that's TJ's point then, okay. Um, I had committed to work with um, Jillian to um, to prepare that grant application. It's, I say it's a grant application, Jillian, is that the right way to say it? You're asking VOC. To identify your project as a, as a trail day for, for their team. Is the way I.
Yeah, so it's, I don't know if grant is the right word, but we would be applying for the VOC services.
There you go, that's the right way to say it, okay, okay.
I don't, I don't know if grant is the right word, but we would be getting folks to work on, in our trail system for no cost.
And it would just be sometime during the summer, most likely. Um, but is, any uh, any objection to um, to Jillian and I uh, trying to get that done by October fifteen? Objection, okay, well then, let's, let's pursue that, um. And then just to summarize that with uh, with Paul and TJ's suggestion, um. Trail uh, construction uh, on Black Canyon Open Space. Um, and then with maintenance on any of the other trails as a backup. Would be the, the focus, okay?
And just a quick aside, I know Manitou Springs PD is planning on connecting with Keep Colorado Springs Beautiful. For an additional cleanup at Black Canyon. So we do have PD also continuing to schedule cleanups at that location, I know there's still a lot up there, so. Um, but we'll keep picking away at it.
Yeah, that's it, it's the right phrase. Um, look, cuz I, I don't wanna forget, otherwise I'll have to uh, owe my wife big time. Um, my son has been one of the um, crew leaders. For the Creek Week Cleanup, which is uh, this past weekend and next weekend. On uh, on Fountain Creek and um. So my family does the section from, we meet at the Ball Field on Becker's Lane at nine AM on Sunday, October fifth. And we do the section from the Adams Crossing Bridge upstream to the pool. And um, we usually have about seven or eight of us. Um, and uh, we, we've corralled one new person, but we've lost two people. Uh, who have passed away in the past year, uh, who won't be doing it, so if any of you wanna get in the creek. Or walk the sidelines of the creek on Sunday to pick up trash. Uh, come join us at nine AM at the Ball Field on Sunday morning. Okay, uh, anything else on uh, the VOC um, application? All right, moving on to OSAC meeting minutes, um. Jillian really needs to explain because I had no idea how our minutes got done, uh, but by Amanda Robinson. Jillian, can you explain what's going on there?
Yeah, so ever since I've known OSAC for the past two years and five months. You guys have allotted administr- administrative funding for someone to. Type out the OSAC minutes after each meeting, so you don't have a secretary. You hire someone to create your minutes for you. Um, what they do is typically watch the meeting and draft the minutes from their video recording. Or in this case, it would be the, the text that the AI person is typing for us right now. And so that had been Amanda Robinson, but she submitted her resignation last week. So right now, OSAC does not have a secretary or an assigned. Staff person to take your minutes, so I guess what I'm asking is, or I guess what OSAC needs to decide. Do you want the city to work to hire someone else, just like you had Amanda doing your minutes? Or do you want to vote in a secretary? Because AI can record the, the text from our conversation. But I don't think we can use that text for the minutes themselves, we still need a, a human to go over those.
Well, I think it'd be real interesting to see what this AI mechanism generates from this meeting, see how usable it is. Um, because sometimes we talk a whole lot and it doesn't need to be reflected in the minutes. Uh, so it'd actually be interesting to see how useful it is. Um, I guess I'd like to wait and see. Um, make it available to the members to see what the AI mechanism generates. Uh, any of you have experience with this in any other committees or groups that you are, or Judith, any knowledge on that? I don't.
No, not yet, but I do remember that um, one of the difficulties OSAC has had. Um, cuz you've had secretaries that were board members. Is that a lot of times, OSAC meetings are really long and there's a lot of information, so. It's been really hard to recruit a secretary uh, long-term from the board, so I guess if it were. Me, I would probably um, agree with Dave on this one and check that out first.
Okay, well, let's um, any other comments on that or, or um?
Can you hear me?
Yeah, Cheryl, go ahead.
Um, so I served as one of the secretaries for a couple of years, as well as um, Andrea and Nancy before.
Okay. Oh, you're freezing out.
Okay, um.
We can hear you though, if you cut your video.
So I'll, I'll keep talking then, um. And I'll just turn it off, um, so yeah, it's, it's a ver- it's a lot of work and um, I, you know. It was right after I, well, no, it was after Andrea did it for a while that, that we went to this other approach. So I would like to, yeah, see what this generate, uh, AI might generate, but then, yeah, we would need to, I guess. Hire someone from the city, um, and I do want to just make a correction for tonight's uh, minutes. Uh, and that is that you had mentioned that uh, your and my travel is what uh, moved. A meeting to tonight, but it wasn't my travel, I think in my memory, it was Judy's.
Oh, you're right, okay, thank you.
Okay, just for that correction, okay, thanks.
Well, Jillian, can we kind of roll with that? Um, see what this thing generates, um, share that with the members between now and whenever it gets generated. And then uh, come back and revisit this, I'll put it on the uh, late October agenda, would that work?
Yes, that works, and I do want to mention, if OSAC decides to not hire someone and not choose a secretary. It's on me to do your minutes, so please make a decision at the October meeting. Um, cuz currently I'm helping Parib with their minutes, they're in a similar situation, and I will say it is time consuming.
Okay, so Parib also, uh, Amanda helped them out?
Uh, no, Parib just had their secretary resign, so they're, they're in kind of a different situation, but. Similar as they don't have someone to take their minutes right now.
Okay, so who, was Amanda a city employee?
That's a good question, I think so, uh, she was a part-time employee, so she wasn't in the office, she, she worked from home. Is the way I understand it, I never met Amanda in person, only via email. But I understand she was a part-time or per diem employee and.
Okay.
Um, paid through the open space fund for tho- for those specific minutes.
Yeah, and that's under the administrative services budget item, okay, okay. All right, any other comments on that, on um, how to handle minutes?
Is there anyone that wants to be secretary? On the board?
I've been secretary for my HOA and. For one other organization, I'd be happy to do it, but I, I don't think I can do that and be the chair at the same time, um. The, the chair involves a fair amount of uh, preparation for these meetings with Jillian, and uh, so I, I need to pass on that, um. But I find word processing pretty easy to do, but some people find that a chore, so I get it. Um, you know, we could always volunteer, Andrea, she's not here, that would be easy to do.
I don't recommend that.
All right, I take that. I, I take, I take that back and none of you will repeat that, okay. Um, all right, that's, that's done with the minutes. Uh, next, let's go to our, our real meaty matter here, which is the um, budget proposal. Um, to remind you, we had our meeting in late July where we talked about our goals and our budget goals. Then I produced um, a preliminary list of budget items for the August meeting. We had a brief discussion, um, no changes came out of that. I haven't received any comments from any of the members to substantially change or, you know, revise numbers. So we're gonna look at this one more time, and uh, it's in your packet, thank you for bringing that up, Jillian. Um, there are not many line items here. And my understanding, and, and Judith uh, helped me here, but my understanding is that we will. Um, adopt a motion approving this tonight, and then I will make a presentation. To council uh, sometime in October or November, whenever that appropriate time is. Uh, recommending this to council and asking for their approval, does that sound right for the process?
That is correct, and right now, uh, unless it changes, um. The last Tuesday of the month, the twenty-eighth of October, is when the boards uh. Committees and commissions will present to city council their budgets.
Okay, thanks, that's what we need.
Moving target, it can always change, but right now, it's the twenty-eighth.
Okay.
And Dave and OSAC, before we get too deep into this, I do want to propose. Or I, I wanna let you know, if OSAC is able to contribute twenty grand to Creek Walk Six next year. There is a strong possibility that project can start next year, instead of being delayed until twenty twenty-seven or beyond. We have another grant opportunity, and if OSAC is able to contribute an additional twenty grand. Um, we, we should be able to begin Creek Walk Six, which I think would be great. Um, I know you contributed quite a bit to Creek Walk Four this year, and I hope you've seen the progress so far. Uh, it looks like they're about halfway done or halfway complete. So I don't have it listed on here, but I would like to request a Creek Walk Six line item. For twenty thousand dollars for twenty twenty-six.
And what, what drives that number as opposed to something higher or smaller? What, what are you thinking?
I believe it's a grant match.
Okay.
So it's a, it was a pretty specific number, uh, we've, I feel like I've been in budget meetings constantly this past month. Um, but I believe it's a grant match, and it would be extremely helpful to move the project forward.
Um, and who's paying the rest of, of that phase? Is that, some of that is C-Dot, I understand.
Yep. Uh, C-Dot, I'm not sure who else, what other organizations are involved with, with funding the project, but I know C-Dot is contributing. And I can find out for you guys and send you a, a breakdown after this, I just wanna confirm with. With Ben and our project managers before I, before I say anything wrong.
That will, that'll require a motion though, a vote.
If you're.
Oh, sure, yeah, yeah, to, to, to change. Well, whatever, whatever we present, yeah, needs to be approved by the committee, is that what you're referring to? Okay. Um, well, let's put that on the list here, and let's just walk down the rest of it, um. The professional services, um, is the same number, well, actually, this is the Kimley Horn. Um, Black Canyon Open Space, um, recall that we approved that in August. And that is an hourly contract for services to ke- to help us handle the permitting, the engineering. Uh, and then ultimately, um, well, I think those are the two main, two main items. The training was the COSA conference, uh, we'd like to keep that on the budget, um. So that members can participate, that's where that number comes from. The noxious weed mitigation, that figure is the uh, Service Corps Grant Match for two weeks of work. Uh, that's an application that we, we submitted a month or so ago, uh, for twenty twenty-six work. Uh, so if that is approved by the Service Corps, we would be spending those dollars to support. Um, the crew for two weeks on our trails. The trail building, you see in the notes there, um, most of that is a, is a large figure for Black Canyon Open Space. We use the same figure from the REMFE contract from the last year. Uh, we're under no requirement to, to renew that, but again, that's where that number comes from. And then uh, Jillian and I, and I think Paul suggested, the three of us, we should add some additional dollars, so that's where the total of ninety thousand comes from. The land acquisition really is the reserve fund, it is the, the fund that has accumulated from the sales tax proceeds. That has not been used since the, the purchase of the Black Canyon property. And that's exactly what it's supposed to do, is accumulate so that we have a, a treasury, if you will, to recommend to council for acquisitions. Administrative support, um, oh, let me finish with that, so that. That four hundred thousand is, is the way Tim Beeson described it, it's just the rollover each year of the funds that aren't used. That are accumulated. Then last was that administrative support, some of that was for the me- meeting minutes. Um, Jillian, does any of, any amount of that go to your department though? For reimbursement of expenses?
Oh, I wish, that administrative support goes to your, it goes to your, uh. The person who is being paid to create the OSAC minutes.
Okay.
So.
Then, the big, the, the other number is the projected revenue figure. Uh, Judith, if you could help us on this, but my understanding is, this is kind of a shot in the dark. Because the marijuana sales taxes is anticipated to decline quite a bit. Uh, because the, okay, cuz the Colorado Springs approval, so. Um.
Yeah, we, we are understanding that this is ballpark. You know, now, I mean, uh, it, it not exactly a total shot in the dark, but, but um, that. Um, yeah, this will be a little bit of a moving target too, depending on um, the ballot measure and other factors.
Yeah, yeah, that's just the best really we can do right now.
Yeah.
Then um, following up on Jillian's suggestion, uh, that we consider adding a Creek Walk. A segment six expenditure of twenty thousand dollars, uh, as a grant match to um. To help get that work done, you, you may recall Denise How's presentation to us in late July. She was saying that's gonna be twenty-seven or twenty-eight, I think it was twenty-seven. Um, but Jillian's update is that we could accelerate that. Uh, if we could put some, some funds to that, uh, I personally would support that. But anyway, let's put that on the table right now and ask the, the rest of the members to comment, um. What, what's your sense for approval or adjustment, uh, changing numbers? Uh, cuz this is our last opportunity before we go before council, Robin, what are you thinking?
Well, I'm not seeing the hundred and fifty thousand for the fire mitigation on uh, in Black Canyon.
Robin, that's.
Oh, is that gonna be spent in this year?
Yes, that's correct.
Oh, okay then.
Yeah, assuming, assuming council approves that, um, yeah, next week. That's slated to be done in the next month or two, so that, that's a, yeah, twenty-five expenditure. And the same with the eighteen thousand that we approved in August for Timberline for the Iron Mountain Trail Repair. Uh, those two trail segments would be expended in the next, uh, well, if they start October thirteenth, um, the next two weeks after that.
Right. So those expenditures plus everything OSAC has funded so far this year have been factored into the pr- the projected rollover. Already, just so you guys know, so we've preemptively taken those numbers out.
Could I make a suggestion on the twenty thousand?
Yeah, please.
I guess i- i- if it were me, uh, and I was a voting member, I, I guess I would, um. And you're wanting to make a motion tonight, I'd probably move to approve it, but contingent upon reviewing the grant. Because you haven't seen the grant, you don't know what it is, I mean, we're assuming it's a matching grant, but I guess I'd be a little um, risk averse. To approve something when I haven't seen any of the grant um, material.
Yeah, thanks for the caution there, just to, let's look at some details, we could approve it on a preliminary um, basis. And council will certainly understand that this is a, uh, it's an active development, it's happening right now. Uh, so that's why it's not fixed, but um, so thank you, Judith, um, Jillian, could we? What, what do you think we, you could get to uh, the, the members to provide that backup or detail?
So I can get details on that tomorrow, I'll check in with our project leads and send over all the information I have. Or all the information they have.
Yeah, okay, that'd be fine. Who else we got? TJ, Paul, Cheryl, any thoughts or um, again, this is. Tracks what we did in July, so, but if you have thoughts or you wanna tinker with it, please do.
Yeah, I'm on board with the twenty thousand for the, the next Creek Walk phase.
Okay, thanks, Paul. If we did that, we'd just add another line item, call it, as we did before, Creek Walk Segment Six, twenty thousand. That would change our expenditures, um, increase it by twenty.
Correct. Add on that account line grant match.
Okay.
So I'll go ahead and make a motion.
Yeah, please do.
I'll second.
Whoa, I didn't hear that motion.
Oh.
He um, put a, a twenty thousand dollar line item with a grant match. Contingent upon um, the information that Jillian will get us about the grant match.
Thank you, Paul, second on that?
Second, yep.
Yeah, okay, yeah, thanks for.
I said for the Creek Walk project, but.
That would be the last segment, yeah, now, well, there's five, uh, but five hasn't even been designed, cuz it goes right through the middle.
Of course, six.
Okay. Uh, any other discussion on this motion to add a Creek Walk line item for twenty thousand? Okay, let's vote, uh, all in favor of Cheryl's motion to approve the Creek Walk uh, line item. Um, contingent upon receiving details and the committee approving that, raise your hand. Paul, we got you on that too, okay, that's approved by all five members, thank you. And then I guess what we should do then is ask for um, uh. I'll ask for any further comments, but uh, I think we need one last motion just to approve this uh, propos- budget proposal as revised. Um, and authorize um, Jillian and me to present that to council. Um, I've only seen that done one other time, because I've only been on the board for, uh, on the committee for uh, almost two years now. Um, Tim Beeson and Jillian prepared about a two or three-page summary of activities in the prior year. And what the proposal is and presented that to council, so that would be the next step. Any other changes, um? Comments, um, I'll make sure that, uh, well, I say I'll make sure, Jillian's gonna. Get these additional details out, um, but then I'll figure out how to poll the members, um. And monitor when we present this to council to make sure, uh, to follow up on Judith's. Suggestion that we all take a look at it, make sure we're comfortable with that line item, I'll follow up on that.
So we do need a motion?
I think so, motion to approve uh, the budget proposal as revised.
I move that we approve the budget proposal as revised. Do we need anything about you presenting it at the next me, at the next council?
No, I think that's just the normal process. It sounds like. Okay. Thanks, Judith. And thanks for the motion. Cheryl and Robin?
Robin, second. I'll second.
Thank you. Second by Robin Kovats. Any more discussion on the budget proposal as revised? None? Okay. All in favor of approving the motion? All right. And we got Paul too. Good five. Cheryl, we got your approval on that? It was your motion?
Oh, yes. You can't see me. Yeah.
Okay, very good.
I can see myself, so I thought I was on there, but.
Thank you, guys. Uh, next is trail maintenance. We have some updates. Um, I know I put this line item on the agenda and I don't know what I was thinking. Inman Trail Maintenance. I'm to give you an update. I don't know what that's about.
Is that this, is that the workday on the sixth?
Well, I think that's, no, that's the workday on the fifth that you're talking.
The fifth, yeah, okay.
That's, that's the next time. That bubbled up right before I left on my trip. Shanti, excuse me, Shanti Toll called, said that he and Medicine Wheel normally do an October Trail Day on, uh, the Yute Indian Trail, but they, the trail is in such good shape, uh, compliments to how it was designed and the previous trail maintenance that they really did not want to put a crew up there and wanted to do something on Inman or Iron Mountain. And so they identified this stretch from Spring Creek where you go right up the fall line. Um, it's about the first two hundred yards of the trail. And so that came together very quickly, um, because of, um, Corey Satella, Shanti Toll, Paul Arlenhouse working with Jillian. So that is going to happen this Saturday. And they're thinking they're going to have what, like twenty, twenty-five people, I think.
Yeah.
Very good.
Talk about that. You want to wait till that agenda item or you want to talk about that now?
No, go ahead. Go right to it.
Okay. Yeah, I met with Shante and Cory and we walked site. So we've got a good plan. It's just basically rebuilding and, and updating some grade drainage to get water to keep it from running all the way down that, um, that section. So it's, it's a good project. Sounds like the folks from the, uh, incline are pretty motivated. Um, so hopefully we get, yeah, some good, um, uh, some good workers and, uh, we should have a good work day.
Yeah. So that's, uh, and, and of course, any committee, committee members, welcome to attend. Uh, I, um, that is on the fifth, which is Sunday. I can attend for a couple of hours, um, in the early part. So I'll be there in the morning. Paul, were you going to be able to attend or, or?
Uh, yeah, I, I am, I am able to attend. Yes.
Okay. Have you been able to reschedule your vacation?
Well, my wife twisted her ankle, so I'm still taking vacation, but we're not going, uh, anywhere. So.
Well, I hope you get out to see the fall colors and pretty nice out. I was in North Cheyenne Canyon this morning. It was really, uh, stunning, uh, quite nice.
Yep.
Uh, um.
Yeah, and, and on that, I, I am going to do, there, there's two, two areas that need some rock arming. One is off of, um, Laguna Point Road. Right there is the, is it crosses that drainage? And then the, the other is up near where the, the professional work was done last year, kind of in that ravine. And on Monday, I'm meeting with Josh. Um, I think we can source rocks for the project up high, um, along the trail. And I think he's going to help me on Monday do that. And then I'm going to look at, uh, the rock pile in the service area and see if I can get enough rocks for the, this project on Laguna Point. And then hopefully I'll work on those next week.
Okay. Very good. Thanks for your effort. Any questions on those maintenance, um, maintenance items? Okay. Uh, on the wayfinding signage update, uh, I, I may have hit this, uh, back in August, but, um, uh, Josh Farmer and his crews did install, uh, a number of the arrows for the Inman Trail, the lower Inman on Delaware and Oklahoma and, um, Peakview Streets. Uh, we still have one sign. We need to get a post and a sign on the Inman Trail Junction above the high school football field. And I mean, the formal field, not the practice field. Um, but that's the only one that really is calling out for some signage. And so I'll keep working with Josh on that and we'll get that done. I'd like to move into that trail mapping. Uh, I, I really wanted Andrea's input on this. Um, so I'll still, um, follow up with her. I did send her an email asking her about it. Um, this is what we're talking about. Let me see. I gotta change my, change my video so you guys can see what I'm doing here. Um, okay. This is the map we're talking about, um, that the Chamber of Commerce at the Visitor Center has. It's an eleven by fourteen. It has the trail map on one side and the parks. Uh, it's actually in the packet, but this way you can just real quickly, you can see how large it is. It's a very slick printing. Um, it's not inexpensive, although I have no idea dollar wise what it costs. It's just in today's world to print, uh, glossy four color print is not, not cheap. Um, so the request from the Visitor Center is that they'd, they'd like to get a resupply. And, um, so that raises the question of paying for it and revising it. Uh, there are some changes to the trails on it. Um, I met with, um, Danu uh, Fat of the Parks Board and they'd very much like to revise some of the descriptions. On the back of it, there's a description of all the parks. Um, there are no descriptions of the trails, but each of the parks that the city has is described briefly, one through nineteen. Um, so Danu and her committee would be involved in it. And, uh, Corey Satella, who's on the Mobility and Parking Board, uh, wanted to make sure things were accurate, uh, which made sense. So this could be a little bit of a process, but to me, it also raised the question, do we want a hard copy map? Um, who's using it? Um, or do we want to just invest our dollars on digital maps with QR codes, codes and all of that? And I don't know the answer to that. Um, I like paper maps, but it just seemed to me we got to ask that question and see what, what do you think our users want and what do you guys think? So that's what that agenda item is. Um, what do you think about updating and reprinting the Manitou Springs Trails and Parks brochure? Judith, please.
Um, does the chamber keep any data regarding how many people come in and request a paper map? I'm just curious to see if, you know, because I, that would, that's something I would want to look at is their data. If there's a lot of people coming in and saying, we really want a trail map. Um, so I, I don't know, I don't know the answer to that either. Um, but if there is, I would probably reach out to the chamber and, and see what the interest is in a trail map. People are usually kind of moving away from them now, but, um, if there's a huge demand, uh, that would certainly maybe move the needle in one direction, you know, versus another.
Well, those are good questions. I don't have any of those answers. So I think the question would be, how many did we start with? Over what timeframe have they distributed that? Um, or what kind of data can they give us over how, how, how many are they handing out each week or each month? Um, what, yeah, yeah. Then the other question though, let me throw this one to Jillian is, recall that Jillian had informed us that, um, the city had, had finished the GIS mapping and, and you can go find that on the city website. But I keep wondering how accessible is that on your phone? Um, I don't know that. Um, and are people using trail forks and Gaia and Kotrex? Um, is that where we ought to, that, that's for trails. I don't think that's going to address parks very much.
Yeah, and Dave.
Please.
Parib had a, Parib had a very similar discussion at their last meeting about are people really looking for paper maps? And they, they settled on yes, it would be good to have paper maps available for folks who, I mean, some people use maps as a keepsake. I know a lot of, they still print the hard copy maps at Garden of the Gods. You can get the map on your phone, but a lot of people want the map. So they have that, that keepsake from where they're visiting. My, my hesitation with paper maps is, you know, as soon as you print a map, it's outdated and it's a lot easier to update your online maps, which we do have our interactive online trail map. I haven't received feedback about how user friendly it is from a cell phone. I've looked at it a few times on my phone. I normally look at it on my computer.
Yeah.
Um, but you, you know, I'd support paper and the online version, but I just know, uh, I would want to wait until we print. I want to wait until, you know, creek walk is finished. I think that would be great to have on a formal paper map. Um, so I don't think this is something we need to rush into. I do know right now Parib is submitting any corrections or edits for the map. That was kind of their task after their last meeting was corrections to the descriptions of the parks because some of those need updated. So that's what their committee is working or their board is working on.
Okay. Well, and again, I know that, uh, Danu, the chairman of the, uh, PARB, um, she supported it and she wanted, wanted our input on, on how we, you know, what do we want to do? Um, Jillian, what, um, you know, one thing is we need to find out what it costs to do this, to do a thousand or two thousand or what have you. I can check with the chamber, the Visitor Center and, and get the data information that, uh, Judith was asking about or, or at least ask for it. Um, but how do we do printing through the city? Is that always con- it's contracted out? We don't have a city printing office.
Yeah, I can look into that, Dave, and get some numbers for how much it will actually cost to print the brochures.
Yeah. The, um, yeah, I don't know who printed this before. Um, I know that, uh, Danu remembered working with Dave Wolverton and, and Bob Hodick. Uh, they did the cartography. Um, so who knows where the masters are on this and, and what's involved in, in, in doing that. Well, then it sounds like we have a little homework to do. If, if Jillian will look into some printing, I'll talk to the Visitor Center, get some info on that, uh, data. And, uh, if I can circulate stuff before the next meeting, I'll do that.
Hey Dave, I got one quick question.
Yeah, please.
Um, we're, we're talking about printing and costs like that. Um, there's a lot of other, um, groups involved with this that are having a say. Um, how much are they willing to put forward towards offsetting the cost or is OSAC going to be a hundred percent on the hook for this?
Yep.
That's a great question, TJ. And I think the thing everyone is waiting for is how much do these brochures cost? So I will make sure to bring that number to OSAC's next meeting. I'll share it with the map board and I'll also share it with Parib. And I forgot to mention, we have to wait until Black Canyon has its trails before we print this map also. So.
Nice to add that. Yeah, I'm with you.
Well, absolutely. So we really do have some time here and I, I just want to make sure it's as accurate as possible if we are going to hard copy again.
Yep.
Yeah, just a couple. So I, I was a trail forks admin back in Indiana. Um, I'll try this winter to do a good look at Kotrex trail forks, at least those two, uh, maybe some others and just see if those are all in alignment and what it would take to make sure that for Man Two, that our trails are, are in there correctly. Um, you know, I think we could consider scaling down from the big, really fancy printed, you know, could we do a more compact, more cost effective map that provided links to those, you know, that for folks who really want to get into the weeds, that they can go online or on their phone just to see stuff and that we have kind of some maybe scaled back information on the map. So.
Well, that would make sense. That would allow you to do not an eleven by fourteen, but something smaller, but include the links. Okay. Yeah.
And I agree. I don't want to print anything until we have Black Canyon.
Okay. Well, then I, we'll do some homework on this in the next month, the next few weeks. Keep this as an active agenda item. Um, and get input from the other parties and, uh, keep this moving. Um, any other suggestions on that? Okay. Um, let's see. Uh, we're down to future agenda items. Um, this will come back. The mapping will come back. Um, the OSAC budget presentation to council. Um, I've put down for November, October, just to, uh, think about another REMP contract and whether there's any specific maintenance we want to contract with them for. Um, again, that's for discussion. We're not required to do that. And let's see, I had one other item from today. I'll check my notes that we were, um, we were going to revisit. Well, we'll have updates on these trail maintenance, uh, projects on the Iron Mountain, on the, um, Spring Creek section of Inman. So again, we'll have mainly reports, uh, on the next agenda item, uh, excuse me, the next meeting. And let's turn to that. I think the meeting would be when? Let's look at a calendar. The fourth, Monday is the twenty-seventh of October. Uh, so almost a full four weeks away today being Wednesday. So October twenty-seventh, six P M. Is any conflicts for anybody or you think that still works? We'll stick with that? Okay. All right. And then, um, I'm going to ask TJ to entertain us again. Where have you been in the last month? Uh, I thought the last one was Alligators in South Dakota. That still sounds like a real oxymoron. So give us one more update, if you would.
I just rolled in from Montana, um, on Saturday. Um, it's been a long, long past couple of days, but I did find a dinosaur on Thursday. So that was a pretty cool, um, thing. So, but it's got to wait until next year because snow's going to get ready to fly up and, and we're, we're digging a hundred miles south of the Canadian border up there. So it's going to get pretty chilly pretty quick up there.
So it's just freezing? It just doesn't work for your excavation?
If I can't feel my fingers, I can't do any good work.
Okay. All right. Was it hot? Pretty hot this summer though?
Very hot.
Yeah, South Dakota, Montana. Updates from anybody else?
Nice tan.
Very good. Thank you, Judith. How about you?
Yeah, I just have one community service announcement, uh, putting in a plug for the candidate forum, which is Thursday, October ninth at the Cliff House. It will start at, uh, five thirty. It is, uh, sponsored by the Chamber of Commerce and facilitated by the League of Women Voters. Chance to meet, uh, and talk to the candidates. And also I'm sure there'll be discussions on the, uh, ballot issues as well. So Thursday, the ninth, at five thirty.
Five thirty. Thank you. Thanks for the notice.
You bet.
Okay.
And I forgot to mention, I'll be at the COSA conference starting, I'll get there Sunday and it goes through Wednesday. So thank you again for funding my registration. I really appreciate it. And I'll share a summary of some awesome ideas and networking that happened at the next OSAC meeting.
Very good.
More thing. Can I have one more thing?
Yeah, please.
I'm so glad you're going, Jillian, because I wanted to go, but I got invited to the, um, the climate summit in Breckenridge. And so I had to make a decision. So I'll be attending the climate summit, but I also attended the Colorado Springs, um, Mobility Summit la- uh, last Friday, uh, the Friday of, uh, last Friday of September. And it was awesome. Uh, it was an all day conference and I met Emily who did a presentation on, um, on the, um, volunteers, the Mile High Youth Corps.
Oh, awesome.
Really interesting. So it was good to make that connection. So I just want to let you know, but, uh, oh, I can't wait to hear about the COSA conference. Thanks for going.
Yeah, no problem.
Okay. And then, um, I'll close out with, um, Paul and I'll be at that workday on, uh, the fifth. Paul and I'll be at that workday on, uh, the fifth, uh, Sunday morning. And if you wanna, if you wanna walk in the creek on Saturday, uh, with my family at Creek Walk, we'll see you at nine A M. on Saturday. Okay.
Wait, was that Saturday? Wait, Dave, was that Saturday or Sunday?
Saturday, Saturday is the creek walk cleanup on that section of, uh, Fountain Creek.
Okay.
And, and then Sunday is the trail workday at Spring Creek.
Okay.
All right. Anything else? Otherwise, okay, we'll go ahead and adjourn. Jillian, thank you for coordinating again. All right, see you guys.
Bye.
Oh, and Nate and Vanessa, thanks for joining us.
Thank you, Dave. Thank you.
Okay, bye.